Yes.
Sorry, Mitsuru. I'm almost done. Well, you know how it is.
Akihiko, are you feeling unwell? You seem to be short of breath.
I'll be fine. More importantly, why don't you help his studies? He ended up in the hospital right after transferring. Might need some help to make up for the class time he's missed.
You do have a point. Here, these are my notes from last year. You can use them if you'd like. I don't think the content of the class has changed much since then.
Your notes are as perfect as ever. They're easier to understand than the textbook itself.
Flattery will get you nowhere. But I suppose I am rather particular about my note-taking. In class, I listen closely and write down bullet points. Then I organize them later into a more readable format. It's a bit time-consuming, but I find it's overall a more efficient way of reviewing the material. If you plan your day-to-day tasks effectively, test preparation is as good as done. You seem to have a knack for this. I'll teach you more of my study techniques next time.
Mitsuru was right. Efficiency is key. We're all given the same amount of time. It's how well you manage it that can set you apart.
Indeed. Not even a second of time should be wasted. On that note, shall we return to studying?
Alright, done.
Huh? Akihiko, you're drenched in sweat and at heavy breathing. Are you sure you're...
I'm fine. I've just been squatting over my chair this whole time. Wanted to challenge myself to hold it until I was done with your notes. Working out while studying is quite an efficient use of my time. What do you say?
Why are you like this? I thought I told you not to push yourself until you've fully recovered. If you take efficiency too far, it'll backfire. Don't follow his example, okay? Well then, I think we've made a fair amount of progress. Let's call it a night. Oh!
Wait, what? For a second!
Geez.
Man, this sucks. Guess I don't have much choice with Kirijo Senpai getting on my case. She was like, "If you fail your midterm, there will be consequences." I feared for my life for a second. You guys are my only hope. Can you give me a hand here? Pleeease?
You can start by taking this seriously. You've been distracted this whole time.
As they say, it pays to be prepared. Gotta get myself in the right mindset first, right? A good study session needs a clean and organized workspace and the perfect mood for learning. And so, to set that mood, I, Junpei Iori, volunteer.
What? Where is this coming from?
You there, young man! What lecture would you like to hear from the great Junpei? History? Arithmetic? Literature? Ah-ha! A man of culture. Literature it is, then! Have you ever read the famous dystopian science fiction novel, Nineteen Eighty-Four? Oh, you haven't? That's a shame, but oh well!
I'd really like to close the book on this chapter.
We all need a breather sometimes. What'd you think about the great Junpei's lectures? Right? Can't have a good study session without a good break.
Oh, please. Don't let yourself get infected by Junpei's influence. If we keep humoring you, it's going to impact our studies too. Or maybe we should just let you fail. Find out what Kirijo Senpai's consequences are like firsthand.
Whoa, whoa, whoa! Let's not get hasty here. I was just joking around. Y'all get serious, I swear! Don't abandon me! So, this goes like that. Then you take that and carry it over here. And then... Uh... Hey, man. You mind giving me a little help with this one?
Aw, look who's actually putting the effort in. That wasn't so bad, was it?
About that joke I was telling earlier. Should I pause before the punchline or go with the flow?
Why don't we just pretend this guy doesn't exist and study on our own? I guess that's enough studying for today. Thanks to you, I got a lot more done.
Hello. Alright. Yes, correct. The answer is "May Blues". Next, for the following sentence. What's the matter, Iori? Feeling the May Blues?
What? Oh, uh, it's nothing.
Um, Kirijo Senpai, about this question here?
Hey. Yeah. Oh, you smell that? It's insane. How would you expect me to do that? Come on. That fragrance across the table is just...
Yeah, I know what you mean. To be honest, I can't get enough of it.
Ah-ha! Now that's what I'm talking about, Tsunada-san! Man, this is heaven. Such grace. Such elegance. Truly the fragrance of the upper class.
I'd personally describe it as... stimulating. Ah, I can almost taste the juicy tenderness.
Uh, what?
Oh, I was heating up a beef bowl for a late-night snack. Smells pretty good, right?
A beef bowl? That's what you were talking about? Got you two! Come on! Guys like us should be thinking with our... Well, not our stomachs! Uh, haha. Tsunada-san, you don't happen to have any extra... Yeah?
No eating until you've gotten some work done. Stay focused. Keep your hand moving.
Beef! Beef! Beef!
For goodness sake. Alright, if you answer five more questions correctly, you can have your food.
Yeah! Beef! Beef! Beef!
You're like a horse with a carrot dangled in its face.
One mention of food and you finally give a crap. That's all it takes, huh?
Alright, that should be enough for tonight. Make sure not to eat too much before bed. Look. In that case...
I see. I was hoping to go for another run after rehydrating.
I believe you've done enough physical activity for one day. Any more and you'll hurt yourself.
Fine. So, were there any subjects you needed help with? Nothing beats using them in practice problems. Are you concerned about getting bored and losing focus? In that case, try a quick workout between problems. The brain perks up once you get the circulation flowing. Not to mention, looking forward to your next workout is a great way to stay motivated. In any case, I advise having a good workout ready to treat yourself with after a study session. It all comes down to making it a regular habit. Just a little each day really adds up.
I wasn't going to say anything, but... Akihiko, working out isn't normally a reward for most people. On top of that, what good does it do to preach about long-term habits mere days before the exam?
Hmm, I guess you have a point. In that case, how would you recommend cramming for it?
It's not my usual style, but I would focus on memorizing material that is likely to be tested. If you give it your all, it shouldn't be too difficult. Easier than facing the enemy wholly unprepared, at least.
Well, we can talk all night. But doing is where the magic happens. Here, let me give you some practice problems. You catch on quick. You immediately took what you learned and put it into practice. All you need now is some strength training and you'll be unstoppable. Once the exams are over, why don't we dive into Tartarus for a bit and get some workouts in?
You never change. I'll need to continue keeping an eye on you to make sure you don't overdo it.
The more you study and the more you train, the better results you'll get. I look forward to seeing what you'll accomplish from here on. Let's call it here for today. I want to get some stretches in before heading to bed.
Um... Huh? Hmm... Oh! Sorry. Hehehe. Uh-huh? Huh? Yeah!
Fuka, your notes look so trendy. I kinda wasn't expecting that.
Oh no, these are Natsuki-chan's notes. She let me borrow them since I was out trapped in Tartarus. She sure is. That said, there's actually quite a bit missing from these notes.
Oh, you're right. This part just has the equation and no answer. And this page is full of doodles. And this part... Uh... Is that a drool stain? Hey, it may not be the best study material, but it's the thought that counts, right?
Mm-hmm. I've been trying to think of a way to return the favor.
Complete her notes? You mean like fill in all the parts she's missing?
Oh, that sounds like a great idea! But it's going to be a lot of material. I wonder if I can finish it all.
Then we'll help you out. It'll be a good review for us, too.
Thanks, you two.
Here, let me see those notes.
Oh... Yeah! All done! It looks wonderful!
Haha! Natsuki-chan's in for a real surprise when she sees this.
I'm sure she will. I couldn't have done it without your help. Thanks, you two.
Well, it certainly helped us study too, right?
I'll make sure to give Natsuki-chan the notes back tomorrow. Goodnight!
Whoa. Goodbye. I'm fine helping out with studying, but wouldn't it be easier to focus without the distraction?
They say studying with others grants benefits that can't be found alone.
Hey, so... We flunked the exams. Are we really gonna have to stay behind? Tell me that's a joke.
It's no joke. As students, studying is our top priority. Failure will result in consequences.
Well, I'm not too worried about that. Not naming names here, but don't get in the way, Junpei.
What happened to not naming names? Ugh... I guess if the fate of my trip depends on it, I don't really have a choice. I'll show ya! I'll prove just how serious I am about Yakuushima!
What's the matter? Something you need help with? An arithmetic sequence, huh? Do you remember the formula for calculating its sum? See, if you do this... A beautiful formula. Really arithmeticals, my fancy? Yeah, that one's pretty good. Let me write that down.
Wise cracks from Junpei are one thing. But I didn't account for this.
Maybe he's trying to... Test our ability to concentrate? Yeah, I suppose that's not likely.
Hmm... Akutsuki sounds one-upping me. I've gotta think of a killer comeback.
Stop getting distracted. You need to concentrate on your studies.
She's right! Gotta focus. Let's keep at it!
Are you struggling with memorization? Nothing beats repeating it until you know it by heart.
Beats? Heart? Ahahaha! Not bad, Kirijo-kun.
What? No, that was not my intent with that statement.
Well, if you're pulling out of the race, then I win, hands down! Kirijo Senpai defeated!
Ugh, this is giving me a headache.
Despite the diversions, I'd say that was productive. Keep it up so we can all go to Yakuushima together. Akihiko, regarding mathematical proofs, how would you approach this one?
Trigonometry, huh? Hmm, this is a fun one. I'd say using the law of cosines here would be the quickest. First, you need to set up an equation. Then, since a and c are prime numbers, you can rearrange it like this and... Done.
Ah, c'est magnifique! A brilliant method.
I thought these kinds of problems were easy for you. Were you just testing me?
I didn't mean anything by it. True, I did have in mind a number of ways to solve this. But I found myself wondering about your thought process. I have to say, your speed and accuracy were impressive.
Then I'll test you on the next one. Let's race and see who can solve it quicker.
Oh, it's been quite some time already. We should remember to take breaks.
You've got a point. Focusing for too long has diminishing returns. Let's rest for a bit.
Well then, why don't we resume in twenty minutes? You can spend your time however you'd like until then.
Ah, come to think of it, I haven't gotten any running in today. Guess I'll head out for a refresher.
You're leaving the building? You do understand we only have twenty minutes, correct?
Even a short workout's a nice change of pace. What were you guys planning on doing?
I was thinking of making some tea. What about you?
You hear that, Mitsuru? Looks like you and I are on the same page.
I'm well aware that exercise is good for the brain. What I'm worried about is your lack of restraint. Every time you run, you push yourself to the limit. I would hardly call that a refresher.
Yeah. I know I tend to go a little overboard. Sometimes, I guess. Fine, I won't go for a run. Guess I'll just do a few stretches.
I appreciate you inviting us today. You wanted to help take our minds off of recent events, didn't you?
Did you think we didn't notice? You know? It's usually the senpai's role to do these kinds of things. But we decided to take you up on it.
Thanks to this, Akihiko and I were able to get back on our feet. You can expect we'll return the favor in kind.
Yeah. Well, I'll push you as far as your brain can go. Your exams won't know what hit 'em.
For now, let's call it a day. Make sure to get your rest, both of you.
Oh! Thank you. I'm glad everyone showed up for this. I probably wouldn't have been able to concentrate on my own.
Yeah, it hasn't been very long. Thanks for inviting me. I think this'll be a big help for me, too.
We've gotta keep going. It's the only thing we can do.
Yeah. Amata-kun and Tsunada-senpai have been trying to move on, too.
Um... I don't mean to be a busybody, but if there's anything you need help with, please let me know. I am the one who suggested this study session after all.
Fuka, you don't need to worry about a thing, okay?
Sorry, it's just... I always admire things like this. You know, everyone meeting up to study together. I always thought it would be nice to stop by a restaurant on our way home and help each other out.
I can make that wish come true. Let's see, what should you help me with first?
Um, I'm pretty sure the restaurant wasn't the point.
I'm glad I came to the storm. Even after a terrible tragedy, you guys helped me remember how to smile.
I'm glad you came here too, Fuka.
Oh, right! Could you help me with this part? Sure. Hmm... This one's difficult. Let's see.
Alright, what have we got here? Health? Gym? Wait, math? Yeah, I'll pass.
I was in the zone. I guess that really did help me take my mind off of things.
Mm-hmm. It's nice to know that we're not alone.
Dude, you did not just say that. How corny can you be? I get what you mean, though. Guess we'll just keep giving it our all. It's the least we can do to take some weight off our senpai's.
Okay, I think it's about time we call it a night. Thanks for the help, guys. Goodnight!
Excuse me. Yes. I have detected a gaze upon us for an estimated seven minutes now.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to watch. Was I bothering you? Thanks. I was just curious what it's like to study for an exam. Um, is it alright if I study with you? If it isn't too much trouble, I mean.
My data states that elementary school does not feature regular examinations. Is this information inaccurate?
No, you're right. We don't really have tests that we need to study a whole week in advance for. Sorry, um, if you're not okay with it, I can just... Oh, thank you! I'll go get my workbooks now!
Next question. What is the term used to describe the property of having zero electrical resistance?
Oh, I know! Superconductivity!
Correct, Amata-san.
I just happened to see it on TV. It was an ultimate technique in Featherman! Not that I care about that stuff. Oh, sorry, Koromaru. I guess I was being a little loud. Let's get back to studying.
It appears that Amata-san has entered a state of non-REM sleep. He is in a deep slumber. Sleeping here may cause his body temperature to decline sharply, risking illness. Shall we wake him? Understood. I wonder what kind of dreams Amata-san will have. Let's transport him carefully to prevent waking. I will accompany you on the way to his room.
I just happened to see it on TV. It was an ultimate technique in Featherman! Not that I care about that stuff. Oh, sorry, Koromaru. I guess I was being a little loud. Let's get back to studying.
It appears that Amata-san has entered a state of non-REM sleep. He is in a deep slumber. Sleeping here may cause his body temperature to decline sharply, risking illness. Shall we wake him? Understood. I wonder what kind of dreams Amata-san will have. Let's transport him carefully to prevent waking. I will accompany you on the way to his room. Hmm... Precisely. Right then. I decided to hold this study session for us to concentrate on the upcoming exams. Amata, I invited you to join us so you can focus on your own studies. Your presence is welcome here.
Thank you for inviting me. I'll make sure not to be a bother to everyone.
To the rest of you, I want you to set a proper example and take your studies seriously.
Are you going to study with us, Korochan? Good boy!
Koromaru-san says that he will accompany us here as we study.
Well, aren't you a little hard worker? Unlike Junpei over there who can't stop yawning.
Hmm, I can't really deny it. Wouldn't mind being in his place right about now. Dogs never have to study for exams like this. Man, what a life.
Stay!
Um... Go home?
Time for me to go back to my room! Wait! Don't try to get rid of me!
Koromaru-san may not have an obligation to study, but he has another important mission.
True. He's been protecting that shrine this whole time. That sounds like something far more difficult.
Guess if you want to be a dog, you'd better develop some diligence, like Koromaru here.
Being a dog is harder than it seems. You'd be better off just studying, Junpei-san.
Oh, stop! Don't look at me like some pitiful creature!
Alright, that's enough chit-chat. Let's concentrate on our studies. Alright, I think we can begin wrapping things up. Good work, everyone. And Iori, after all the dog talk, I do hope you were able to get through the material you needed to cover.
Uh... What?
Oh, I see. So you're still learning, then? As a dog, I'll need to give you strict behavioral training.
I'm kidding! It was a joke! I'm totally cool being human. No training needed, I'm good!
That will conclude the group study session. It is time for a much-deserved rest.
Nice, Ubit. Nice. Yeah? Oh, right. Alright. Mitsuru? That section won't be covered on the exam.
Oh, uh, sorry. Oh, sorry, I'm having some difficulty concentrating.
Guess that's to be expected with everything going on. I'm not immune to it either. Sorry. I know we're the ones who invited you to study, but... Well, just look at us. I do understand that. But not everyone can carry themselves like you do. But I suppose as your senpai's, we should be showing you a little more dignity.
You do have a point. Well, we can't let ourselves be outdone now, can we? Rain or shine, this is still the last exam we'll ever take as high school students. All the more reason to give it our all.
You're right. There's no excuse for slacking. It's time to prove what these last three years have led up to.
Ooh, I see the fire in your eyes. At this rate, I may have to relinquish my position as top student. That said, test results are but a single measure. What truly matters is that we continue to improve ourselves. May we both make this a triumphant finale to our time here. Sorry for causing you concern. Rest assured, we're both in the right mindset now. Well, I think we've dallied enough. We'll need to make up for lost time.
Whoa. Didn't realize so much time had passed. Guess I was in the zone.
I don't think I've been able to focus this well in a long while. I've just finished reviewing the material.
Serious? Not even close. But I guess that means we've earned a bit of your respect back.
We're almost through this. Keep at it, you two.
Cool. Guess that's that. Now all we gotta do is ace the exams.
Hey, so...
Thank you!
Okay. I think I forgot my eraser back in my room. Junpei, I'm borrowing yours for a sec.
Wait, hold on! Only the flat side, okay? It's brand new. Gotta keep the corners sharp.
Huh? What's the big deal? It's just an eraser.
An eraser's corners are a special privilege reserved for the owner! A precious and fleeting source of euphoria. You learn that when you were a kid? One man's eraser is another man's treasure.
I don't have time for this.
Come on, Fuuka! You get what I'm saying here? You're laughing, but this is a serious matter!
Oh, sorry! It just crossed my mind how peaceful things are. It's strange that just being able to study with everyone like this can make me feel so... Happy.
Yeah, I know what you mean. It makes me wonder if this might be the last time we ever get to do this. Uh, just kidding! Sorry, forget I said that! I was just thinking about next year! Yeah, I guess that's the way to think about it. If I go in expecting the worst, I'm just gonna shut down. Thanks, that makes me feel a little better.
Alright, time to get back to studying! Oh, Fuuka, can I have some lead for my pencil?
Oh, sure. You can take some from this one.
Thankies! Oh, dude, let me borrow your highlighter for a sec. Hey, Yukatan! Mind if I borrow your ruler?
I guess, but why have you been borrowing all of our stuff? Don't you have your own?
Listen, when I heard you forgot your eraser, something just hit me. The simple act of helping each other out is like... That's what it's all about, you know? That's... Happiness.
Junpei-kun...
You say that, but you probably just forgot to bring all your stuff, didn't you?
Busted!
Thank you for studying with me, everyone! I hope we can do this again!
Hey! What? Hey! Yeah!
Hey, so, uh... Didn't Kirijo-senpai say we shouldn't be hanging out like this? Think she'll be mad if she finds out?
I kind of doubt it, but I won't deny that seeing you all does remind me of recent events.
Right! Well then, why don't we just call it a wrap here?
Um, Sonada-senpai? I'd like to ask for some help with this question.
Oh, uh, wait, Junpei-kun! I wanted to ask you... Uh, um...
I think I'll take Koromaru for a walk. Hey, wait! We'll all take him on a walk when we're done. You can sit back down, Amata-kun. Oh, uh, I guess you found out! I was planning on inviting you too, Mitsuru-senpai. I do understand that we don't have time for chit-chat, but I just wanted to spend time with everyone.
Um, this was actually my idea! I was the one who wanted to gather everyone, so... I'm sorry. I don't want everyone to get in trouble for my selfishness.
Hey, you shouldn't be the only one that has to apologize. I feel the same way, Fuuka.
Thanks, Yukari-chan. It's just... When I think this might be the last... Um, in any case, I apologize for this. Let's just call it for today.
Thank you. After warning you all, I wasn't sure how to go back on it. I was actually taking a walk to mull it over. Yukari, Yamagishi, I feel the same way you do.
You did say we should try to go about our lives for now. You hear that, Junpei? Let's get to it.
If we're talking my life, studying's the last thing I'd be doing.
Mitsuru-senpai, could you help me with this?
Of course. What question did you need help with?
How long have we been studying? Time really flies when we're all in it together.
I agree. Thank you for going along with my suggestion, everyone. You think so? I hope everyone else feels the same way.
By the way, I hope you haven't forgotten about taking Koromaru for a walk.
Of course not! Come on, everyone, let's go!
That'll be it for studying, then. Everyone, make sure to give it your all on the exams.